All right, the time is six o'clock and we will now call the April 24th, 2024 regular board meeting to order. First, Director Milner, could you please take attendance?
Director Pine. Director Zuzek.
Here.
Vice Chair Dresley.
Here.
Chair Tate.
Here.
Director Brunz.
Here.
Director Milner, here, and Director Biermeyer.
Here.
Right now, I'd like to ask all those that are able, please stand and remove your headwear to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Right, next, I'd like a motion to approve the agenda.
Director Biermeyer, motions to approve the agenda.
Second, Zuzek.
Any discussion? Director Dresley?
I would like to pull the bid out for the landscaping. Thank you. Pull that from consent? Out of consent and just put it in an individual.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, I would actually like to request that we pull the three policies to be sunsetted out of the consent agenda and have those as an individual action item as well. All right, anything else? All right, all those in favor of the revised agenda with a few items pulled out of consent, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes unanimously to approve the updated agenda. Right. Next, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the March 27th, April 22nd, and April 23rd meetings?
So moved, Dresley.
All right, can I get a second?
Brunz will second.
All right, any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. All right, motion passes unanimously to approve the meeting minutes from March 27th, April 22nd, and April 23rd, 2024 meetings. Next, I'd like to take a moment to recognize our visitors. Thank you for being here tonight in person and thank you for those online who are viewing. Appreciate your dedication to ISD 200. All right, next on our agenda, we have announcements and recognition. First up is Raider Spotlight with Superintendent Champa.
All right, everyone knows this is my favorite part of a board meeting. So with that, I'm going to invite our activities director, Trent Hanson, up, and he's going to introduce our students.
All right, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. It's a privilege to bring students with you, right? It's a highlight for sure. And so we're going to take this in two steps, if you're cool with it. So I'm going to start with these two gentlemen first. The Minnesota State High School League sponsors two premier individual awards, one specifically for juniors, one for seniors. So each member school of the league is able to nominate one male and one female junior for what's called the Excel Award. Talk about that one first. And that stands for excellence specifically in educational leadership. So the baseline requirements are you have to be a junior, make an adequate progress towards graduation, involved in at least one state high school league's order activity, and then recognized specifically for your leadership and service to your school and your community. So we're thrilled to recognize two students every year in doing that. And Noah Quigley was our, excuse me, go on this way. Lucas Voss was our recipient of that Excel Award this year. And to be fair, Noah won it last year. So I'm not totally making it up as a junior. But this year, Lucas was our male recipient, and he's here because what happens is all those member schools submit those local winners. There's hundreds of them that are being considered by a committee at the league. I've sat on that committee for over a decade, so I can speak to the, you know, the quality and the threshold of student profiles that you review. And then there are 32 different students that are selected for a statewide commendation, and we're thrilled that Lucas was one of those 32 kids that received that recognition. So I'm really proud of them. I would like to just have them introduce a little bit about what sports you're in, what activities you're in, and what maybe leadership roles you hold as a captain or a little bit of service. So I'm giving you the mic, big guy.
Oh, I'm Lucas Voss. I'm a captain of the football team, captain of the basketball team, and then captain the track team. And I'm involved in Peer Helpers. Yeah.
He's busy and he's an awesome kid. So, well done. All right. The other award is called the AAA Award. There's three As, and it stands for Academics, Athletics, and Arts. So this is specifically for seniors. Once again, we recognize a male and female, one or two total from the senior class. Noah's our male winner this year. To be considered, you have to be, again, adequate progress towards graduation, but you have to be outstanding in all three of those areas, which makes it really unique, right? So you have to be outstanding in the arts, in the athletics, and also in academics. So this award is selected by our administrative and counseling team. We work through all the profiles of students that are there. Similar, there's hundreds of local winners that then go to region consideration. Thirty-two statewide receive commendation. Noah got that commendation as a AAA Award winner as well. So pretty rad to have two kids from the same school in that really small group. And so I'll give Noah the mic to tell a little bit about what he's involved in.
Hastingswide, I'm a captain of three sports. I ski a lot in the winter. I do Nordic skiing. I'm in cross-country and track and field, so distant sports. And I show livestock over the school year. I'm in 4H. It's about a summary of what I do. NHS. Lucas is in that too, but I know. Next year, well, coming into the summer, June 11th, I'll be going to basic training. And then as soon as I graduate from that, I'm pretty much moving right into the U, packing my bags, and I'm going to be going there for four years for biochemistry is the current plan. So I'm working with that.
One of the things that we just added is recognizing our Raider Spotlight with just a token acknowledgement for you, so.
Nice. Any other questions for these guys?
Noah, what do you show?
I'm, I show, in the summer, I show cattle, family tradition with that, and then lambs as well. So me and my sister kind of do a bunch of stuff with that over the course of the year.
Yeah, we only get two kids up here, right? But just fantastic representatives of just a broader culture, right? And they both know this. But there's a pool, right, of really outstanding candidates that you have to be selected from locally, first of all, and then on a broad scale. So we're proud of them. Well done. Yeah. So I'll kick these guys out. I'll bring up our next student.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard. All right, so also thrilled to introduce and recognize Skylar Little Soldier, senior student athlete at the high school. She's here for a couple different reasons. But the first one is that coming out of the winter season, we like to bring in any of our state champions to the table. And Skylar was the individual state champion at her weight class in girls wrestling this year, which marks the third consecutive year that she's been not only the section individual champion at her weight class, but the state champion at her weight class. So she ushered in the era of girls wrestling in the State High School League three years ago, the first time it was a sanctioned event, and has won the title every year she's been in it, which is obviously unprecedented and benchmark setting, which is pretty rad. So that's the primary reason that she's here. Also note that it's been a busy last week and a half or so, maybe last 10 days. It's banquet season for Skylar, too. She was our Athena winner as the outstanding individual female student athlete at the high school, which there's a really cool event that we were able to attend with her family in St. Paul at the River Center. And then the next day, I don't know, the next day, yep, she was in Hinckley. The Minnesota American Indian Association also recognized her as one of two female high school athletes of the year. So she's been on the circuit, shaking hands and signing autographs. And yeah, really proud of her. So I'll give her the mic for questions, tell you a little bit about maybe what you're doing next year, talk about the state tournament, any questions you have.
Well, I'm Skylar Little Soldier. The state tournament was outstanding this year. The numbers were over 1,000 for girl wrestlers in Minnesota in the high school league. Next year, I plan to attend Grand Valley State University to major in pre-pharmacy and continue my wrestling career. I just want to say congratulations. That's amazing. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have a question, but this is the first time. I'm honored to meet you. I mean, I have read about you. I have never met you. This is, I'm impressed. I've watched and followed you, kind of awestruck here. So it's great to meet you.
Thank you. All right, thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have our spring employee of the semester winners. And we had our spring semester employee of the year awards went to Casey Likes, Christina Cook, Dirk Wassink, Michaela Burr, Anthony Laterno, and Emily Kendall. So come on up, please. We'll have both of you up and then we'll have you stay. Yeah, so have a seat. Tell us a little bit about how long you've been with the district and what you do.
Thank you. Well, I started in the district seven, eight years ago. Started out in food service, subbing in different areas, also working at Kennedy Elementary in the computer labs and secretarial stuff. And then I came over to the dark side and started working at the district office. And I have been there ever since. I started off in the copy center in the district office, and then I moved into finance, and now I'm working for special services doing third-party billing.
I don't know how I feel about the dark side, but Casey brings the sunshine each and every day. So she just lights up the room and has a positive attitude that is just contagious all the time. So no surprise. Congrats.
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Okay, this will date some of the people at the table. I'm not going to name you Jenny, but if you're in school, when I started teaching, 20 of my 26 years in public education here in Hastings, started the fall of 98 as a teacher. I started coaching actually two years before that. But so 13 years of coaching and 11 years of teaching, all at the high school, health and physical education, launched all the, at the time, the brand new string training classes that didn't exist in that era. I spent six years in South Washington, my first administrative run as an AD and AP, and was blessed to come back in 2015. So I've been in administrative role since. A little bit of assistant principal work and mostly athletics and activities work with a little middle school principal sprinkled in. So, yeah, it's all right, yeah.
Excellent. Well, congratulations to both of you. And Trent was just named our employee of the year. So congratulations to that.
All right, thank you. And next, we have our public comment session. So at this time, we'll hear comments from the, from the public. I will note, this is the first time we've had public comment during the meeting and televised since August of 2021. So this is a new change. We have one speaker tonight who will be recognized and allotted three minutes of time. Ms. Ludwig has a 30-second sign to alert you to the time remaining, as well as a timer to signal the end of your time. We ask that speakers state their name for the record and refrain from using this time to criticize or complain about any specific employee by name. Please be aware that the school board is interested in hearing comments from the public and will listen carefully, but is not obligated to respond or debate in this setting. And we request that speakers be respectful. Comments by any others made will be ruled out of order, and those not abiding by this may potentially be asked to leave. So our public commenter, please come forward. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Lisa Hedin. I'm a Denmark Township resident, former school board member and employee of the district. I was going to come tonight and talk about legal fees that were incurred as a result of board questions that are outside the role of governance. I made a public request after, public data request after not getting that information from an email request or a previous ask at a business meeting. So what I discovered, though, is when I came to get that data, I asked for the first quarter. I only want the summative number. I don't want any of the details that require redaction or additional legal fees, is that to date, we've only received bills going into January. So what that indicated to me is that previous reports by the board have either been misunderstood or disingenuous, as the, there have been two data practices, reports, both in January and March, indicating about $5,000 in legal fees associated with public data requests. And then a number of requests has been reported. I think what's not been clear is that the legal fees are not associated with the data requests that have been documented and numbered in the meeting. And I think it's important for the board to understand that and the public to understand that. Those legal fees are associated with requests that happened in 2023, quite some time ago. So there's a, there's a gap, and I anticipate I'll come back and when I receive that first quarter information, that January through March information, and speak to that, since it doesn't seem like it's going to get reported out in business meetings. So until then, I'm just going to ask that the boards state a commitment to financial responsibility, transparency, and clear communication be turned into practice, because I don't think that that's been the case, quite honestly. And then on a completely different note, I just want to take this opportunity to thank the community for the support that was provided for the staff recognition event last week. It was, couldn't have been done without just a wide range of both individual business and volunteer members and support. It was a great event, and I think it's important that it be recognized. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, could you please turn off your mic?
Yep.
All right. Next, on our agenda, we have reports and discussions, starting with the superintendent's report.
Well, our public comment was a perfect lead-in. I only have one topic for the superintendent report, and it's just our staff appreciation. One of the things I said is if our staff ever doubt how much they're appreciated, look around. The event that was held last Thursday was only because of a large group of people who came together and either donated or worked or whatever their role was, but it just really spoke to our staff. And just a huge thank you to everyone. And then just a reminder to our staff of how much they are supported and deeply valued in our school community and the community at large. So huge thank you.
Did any board, I unfortunately was not able to be there. I know the rest of the board was, and I appreciate you all being there and showing your support for staff. Did any board members want to add comments to the, to how Thursday went? It was just amazing, two thumbs up. All right, I've heard good things, but, and I wish, I wish I could have been there. All right, next, we have our cadence review.
Here's your monthly cadence review. Just a reminder of the work that all of our leadership team members are doing in regards to those three anchor areas with engaged learners, effective operations, and communication and collaboration. And you've heard from each of the individuals what that looks like behind the scenes, and then this is what you see collectively. Any questions?
A quick question, Dr. Champa. Do you think it's likely that some of those same expectations or attributes will be tracked next year? Or when is the opportunity to have the team reset their goals for next year? Is that something that happens when?
That will happen at the, before next school year.
Okay.
So sometimes they will continue. So depending on what that is, it may be a two-year, I'm going to take it to the next level. Sometimes it's completed, and we move on to something different. But they all will continue to set goals in each of those three areas that are smart goals.
Right, any other questions? Okay, next on our agenda, we have the Building Construction Fund project update from Ms. Hubert.
Thanks. So the Building Construction Fund accounts for the money the district received from the voter-approved bonds for school renovations and improvements. We currently have approximately 293,000 unallocated that can be used towards future projects related to renovations and improvements. And then the other updates, the grounds insights improvements project has been moved to in design. The overall funds available left in this account right now are about $2.9 million. And there was a $17,000 allocation out of the contingency into the high school shower valves project that was approved at the board meeting last month. And I can take any questions if there are any.
All right, thank you. Moving forward, our next agenda item is the Native American Parent Advisory Committee non-concurrents response.
All right, so earlier this year, our Native American Parent Advisory Committee provided a vote of non-concurrents for the work of the district. And so if you remember, they came and spoke to that and talked about how they've had a change in their committee and what that has looked like. And so as a district, we had 60 days to respond to that. And so here is the response to the committee. This was hand-delivered to the committee because today marks day 61 from when we received that. So they did receive this in time, and I will just quickly go over the items that were included in our response. So one of the things that they had asked for was a liaison. That is a part of our plan and what we have put forth with the state. And so my note here was immediately add that dedicated staff. We did have interviews for that position on April 10th. The second area that we addressed was curriculum and language implementation as required by Indigenous Education for All. And so all areas of our curriculum are currently being reviewed and looking at where those standards fit. And I will say, and I share this with our committee as well, it is a time where our staff, so we have a curriculum overview document right now, and our staff are asking for more resources. So there have been conversations with the American Indian Department in the state and really providing some of those resources and having them come and speak and with our staff as well. Number three is 100% staff development attendance through tribal relations training through the Office of American Indian Education. So providing that culturally responsive teaching, we're doing that this year. Next year, we'll have some specific staff development for tribal relations. Number four, district-wide endorsement and promotion of new standards and ongoing efforts. And the note there is all areas of our curriculum are currently being reviewed to ensure that all standards are embedded as defined by the state of Minnesota and within the Indigenous Education for All Language. Number five, the Hastings NAPAC, that's how they refer to their committee, would like all student educational assessment data disaggregated by ethnicity, sorry about that, and made available to them on a yearly basis. As it has been this year, all trend data will continue to be made available. And then finally, number six is full transparency with their related expenditures. And that too has been available to them next, this year, and will continue to be. My final statement, it is the unwavering goal of Hastings Public Schools to meet the needs of all of our students. We look forward to continuing to strengthen our relationship with our Hastings Native American Parent Advisory Committee and aspire to be a Minnesota model of an example of a strong partnership committed to the well-being and academic success of our students. Any questions?
All right, all right, thank you. Next up, we have the reports out from our school board representatives on various committees. And we will start with District 917 with Director Zuzek.
You've got the summary report from the school board meeting, but just in the background, there's three things that I wanted to bring up. One is that I mentioned that because of the staffing shortages throughout the state and through, actually throughout the nation for high-need special ed services, we've hired five people from the Philippines. They've all got housing, they're all settled in, and that fills five of a high number of spots. So there are some kids that now have a place to go because of that. And, you know, I will say that working both here and working at 917, one of the biggest differences is that they are hiring year-round, all year. They, it's just, there's not as much of a hiring season as there is in a typical school district. The other thing that is of interest is just like we revised our budget for a second time in a year, which is a little bit atypical. But remember that Director Hubert brought some information to us about special ed funding and some changes that could be made. At 917, we redid our budget or revised our budget for a second time in one year. Again, a little bit atypical to do it twice in a year. But this was because of Perkins funding. And Perkins, think of Perkins funding as career technical education funding. And some of the money spent at 917, a lot of it is spent at 917. But they also do mini-grants. And so there's stuff, for instance, that is equipment at the Hastings High School in our industrial technology classes that was purchased through those Perkins funds. And the funding mechanisms changed, and so that's why the budget was revised. And then the third thing is that, because of the high needs of the students, there's many, many paraprofessionals. In fact, most probably, other than intermediate school districts, all districts throughout the state, their largest group of employees would be licensed teachers. At the intermediate school districts, the largest group of employees are the paraprofessionals. And we just met in closed session to talk about the parameters for negotiations with the paraprofessionals. And that, in 917, because it's the biggest employee group, that starts the whole ball rolling for that district, which is interesting compared to what we just did this, gosh, Monday, so, or Tuesday, whatever it was. But anyhow, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, moving on to an update from AMSD from Director Brunz.
Yeah, AMSD is tracking very closely how this legislative session is going to play out. So they've been sending out frequent updates. This is as frequent as they have come. So April 15, sorry, is the last one that has been sent out in response to a supplemental budget report when they got those budget figures in. And then there is language, too, embedded in this report about the House Education Omnibus Bill. Some things to note, just to go back to your point about the scarcity of quality educators or just finding those to fill open positions. There's money set aside for a student teaching pilot program that would pay a stipend to student teachers. They are considering amendments to the Earn Sick and Safe Time Law that was approved last session. So it'll be an expansion of use of time that they've already earned. So it will allow them some flexibility in that. In the House Omnibus Bill, there's a lot of board work to be tracked in there coming through. So official proceedings for our board, well, not for our board specifically, but for boards that don't have a local newspaper, they could post it to their website, and that would suffice the announcement for their public meeting. Providing writ notice to coaches whose contract the school board declines to renew for the following year, no more than 60 days. Sorry, that we would have to, sorry, I can't speak eloquently to that one, but filter perform, I'm going to move on because I'm stumbling on that one a little bit. But some other pieces, students' possession of cell phones in school, policies adopted for that by 2025 in March. Performance measures into our World's Best Workforce Plan, and also our World's Best Workforce Plan will address those students that speak in languages other than English. So addressing those specifically.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, and next is an update on, or from Brightworks from Vice Chair Dresley.
As a Brightworks liaison, I will, we meet annually for the budget. Unfortunately, the budget was not available, so there will be another possible meeting in June, right? But a couple of things to note that they updated us on is Brightworks is increasing its budget with revenues from the REED Act and Compass legislation passed last year. As a result, they're adding 30 new As a result, they are adding 30 new positions to their organization to better serve the metro-area school districts that are members. Brightworks is reorganizing to serve districts in MBE's vision for student achievement across Minnesota. The changing focus will be compass areas of literacy, math, multiple-tiered system of support, and SCL. Our electoral district will not have a spot available to run for until, for four years will be the first spot available. So each electoral district gets two spots. Our two spots are, one's four years out and one's six years out. So, just so. Situational awareness in case anybody was interested in that in those future years.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Okay, moving ahead. Next, we have an update from our Community Collaboration Committee from Director Pine.
We met last week and debriefed on our first event. And it was a planning session for our upcoming meeting, which will be May 15. I believe here at the Hastings Media Center, we're just waiting for confirmation. But we are going to start with kind of introductory activity, doing a district story wall activity, just getting everybody involved, showing where their, you know, date timestamp was and, you know, kind of plotting out the history of where the district has been and where it's going. And then we're going to do breakout sessions and roundtables. So we are going to divide and conquer. We'll have someone on a REED Act, the Innovation Team, election years, and then legislation session. And then we'll wrap up the last 15 minutes with just, you know, kind of call to action and future topics and go from there.
Thank you. Any questions for that committee? All right. Next, Facilities Committee from Director Milner.
We have not met since our last board meeting, so I don't have anything new to report back to the board, but we meet again on May 3 at 8:00 a.m.
Thank you. Finance Committee, Director Zuzik.
Same thing's true for finance. We have not met in the interim. And our next one is also, actually, it's the end of May, I think. I'd have to look for the date, but it's in the May 20s, I think.
Thank you. Next up is the Native American Parent Advisory Committee update from Director Brunz.
Yeah, and before I start going, I'm going to hand out to the community members here, this is an invitation for an event that I'll speak to. Board members, you have a color copy that was handed out before the meeting. All right, so at the last meeting, there was a final review of the applicant pool for the open liaison position. We reviewed and revised some of the interview questions that would be presented in that interview process and then finalized some of those budget pieces that are coming in. There was intensive talk about the planning involved in the ceremony that I would encourage everyone to go to. It's such a great event to recognize like how important identity is to folks and how we can make people feel like they have a space here. And we recognize that as a part of their graduation and what it means in their culture to move on to the next phase. So there's some really integral pieces that honor that process for these students. So it's going to be a really wonderful event. And it was nice to see the work our district staff are doing to properly identify students that identifies Indigenous or Native American and to get those records right. We really are being diligent and purposeful in that work. There was a push in the fall and the spring as well. And that work will continue and be aided by the addition of a liaison.
Thank you. Any questions on that? And for those online, there's a second attachment in Board Book that invites everyone to the ceremony that Director Brunz referenced. All right, next we have the Student School Board Committee update from Vice Chair Dresley.
The Student School Board Committee met on April 3. You guys all already know this because we've given this update during our working session, but this is just for the public's awareness. We had 13 amazing applicants, 10 of, or eight of them were in 10th grade and five of them were in 11th grade. The committee recommended interviewing all candidates who met the criteria that was set in our first meeting. So the committee discussed, the committee reviewed the questions from the previous meeting and feels that everything aligns with the application questions for our interview questions. Interviews will be held on April 30. That's it.
All right, and we will stick with Vice Chair Dresley for a Policy Committee update.
The Policy Committee met on April 12. During our meeting, we reviewed 14 policies, procedures, and forms. Our upcoming meetings are May 6 at 11:30, or yeah, May 17 at 10:00 a.m., May 30 at 11:00 a.m., June 21 at 11:00 a.m., and July 26 at 11:00 a.m. and August 8 at 11:00 a.m. There may be additional meetings scheduled for the summer. And now I'll roll into the first readings. Okay, so for first readings, we have Policy 423, Employee and Student Relations. This is an MSBA model policy that the district didn't have, but we are recommending adoption of it. Any questions? Policy 430, Employee Recognition. There's no model policy for this to be able to compare it against. We removed compensation from the title and we are recommending this for first reading. Any questions? 501, School Weapon Policy. The committee discussed changes, or the committee discussed the changes that were necessary to be made to align with MSBA model policy. In Section 3, added D to define dangerous weapons. And in Section 5A, added the word "willful" and also added Section 7. Other than that, they were all changes from MSBA. 502, Search of Student Locker Desk Personal Possessions and Students Person. The committee discussed adding the statute number to Section 2, and that was it. Otherwise, we're recommending for first reading. 503, Student Attendance. The committee, all of these changes were made based on MSBA's model policy updates that had been done recently. So Section 2 may need to be reworded depending on what administration comes back with if a procedure is added to this policy or attached to this policy. Section 2.1(c)(2) added work missing because of absence must be made up within blank amount of days. Administration will fill that in before the final reading of this policy and same with the next section as well. We're recommending first reading for this for this month. Go ahead.
Is it accurate that 503 is already out there to the administrative team so that they're looking at it? I don't remember if we tasked that.
We have it on an all-admin meeting.
Oh, thank you. Good catch, thank you.
So Policy 503.1 is a procedure, it's student attendance procedure. This is an administrative procedure and is under review with administration. So we'll see that come back at a later date. 503.2, Early Admission to Kindergarten is also a procedure. And it was update, it was update, we updated the format to align with ISD 200 policies, but other than that, there were no other changes. We're recommending first reading. 529, Staff Notification of Violent Behavior by Students. This is an MSBA model policy that ISD 200 previously did not have. We are recommending it for first reading today. Any questions about first readings?
I would just like to add something. The policies that are coming up as new policies were recommended by administration to be created.
Correct, all of them were.
Correct.
We have some policies that are being sunsetted in its policy.
We can talk about this because they're going to be individual items?
Yes.
Or they're going to be individual items, I think we can wait on those.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So policies and procedures that the committee discussed but are not in first, second, or third reading were Policy 206.1, which is Public Participation at a School Board Meeting Procedure in Request Form. We'll be discussing that at our May working session. Policy 220.1, Student School Board Committee Procedures. The Policy Committee will be relooking at that policy after May so that we can get some feedback from the Student School Board Committee before we get that all into, get that solidified. Policy 417, Chemical Use and Abuse. This is under administrative review and we'll come back to the Policy Committee for second reading once that's complete. And Policy 604, Instructional Curriculum. That is going to be for a second reading tonight. And there was added language to Section 3A2. We added the word "linear." Tonight, for second readings, we have Policy 220, School Board Student Representative. 604, Instructional Curriculum. 616, School District System of Accountability. 618, Assessment of Student Achievement. 619, Staff Development for Standards. 802, Disposition of Obsolete Equipment and Materials. Any questions on any of the second reading policies?
All right, thank you. Moving forward, we have, okay, I think so. Well, next we have our consent agenda. Our action items, the first item for our action is our consent agenda, which does include Policies 415, Mandated Reporting of Maltreatment of Vulnerable Adults; 419, Tobacco-Free Environment; and 421, Gifts to Employees and School Board Members. So along with several other items. So I am looking for a motion on this, on the consent agenda.
Zuzik recommends the approval of the consent agenda with the aforementioned things that were pulled out, the multi-site grounds improvement project bid award, and also the sunset policies for further discussion.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second, Dresley.
All right, any discussion on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda with the grounds improvement and the three sunset policies removed. Say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes unanimously. Next, we have the items for individual action. And we'll start with the sunset policies. So the reason that I requested that these be pulled in previous board meetings, not in, not with this current board, but in previous board meetings, I had noted my concerns about policies very quickly coming to the table and being done in one night, where either they're up for one, they're up. Typically, our policies are reviewed every three years, right? And what the practice had been was if a policy is reviewed by the policy committee and it comes to the table with no recommended changes, it would be placed in consent. I have a concern with that because this doesn't give the public time to really read and absorb because it's all done in one meeting. And that's your chance in one every three years. So I have the same feeling about the sunsetting policies. I know, I'll ask Vice Chair Dresley to explain exactly why we're recommending sunsetting these, but my request is that we not just have this done in one night, that we do give the public a chance to, and possibly even board members, right, to really absorb what's going on here and make sure that we're good with it and not just having it done all at once. So Vice Chair Dresley, if you could explain the rationale for the sunsetting.
Okay, so Policies 428, Ethical Behavior; 429, Conflict of Interest; and 432, Employee Social Media are all policies that MSBA does not have a model policy for. They were created three, I want to say three years ago. But it was the recommendation in collaboration with administration that these policies be sunsetted.
So any questions? Okay, so with that, I am going to make a motion that we, is it postpone? That we postpone voting on these until next month. So. I think with sunsetting, I think two meetings is sufficient. Is that, I mean, we can have a discussion. So first, I'll ask for a second.
Zuzik seconds the delay in taking action, postponing it one meeting.
Okay, all right, any discussion? You're okay with? Okay, all right, is everybody okay with? Yes. All right, all those in favor of postponing the vote on sunsetting these three policies, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. All those saying aye, all those opposed, sorry. Motion passes unanimously, we'll have this again on next month's meeting. Next item on our individual action items is the Grounds Improvement Project.
So I, the reason I requested to pull that out of consent was to send it to the Facilities Committee for further research information. That's what I'm requesting. Do I need to motion that?
If you're sure, yes, if that's what you want your motion to be, you can absolutely give a motion and then we can do, we'll do discussion after the second, right?
So I make a motion to send the Grounds Improvement Project Bid Award to the Facilities Committee.
Hey, can I get a second?
Your mayor seconds.
Okay, discussion.
Just as a practical point, we'll have to meet pretty soon because this is a shovel-ready project. So we'll have to meet real soon.
Could Director Hubert talk about the timing? Yep, Director Hubert, would you like to talk about the timing?
Well, the project was planned to start this summer, so it's a summer project. So yes, we would want to meet soon and provide whatever information, additional information you're looking for.
So my concern with it is it's a lot of, lot of money for the outside of the school. And since we have a Facilities Committee now that is, does that kind of stuff or looks at that kind of stuff and can bring it back to the board with information about the details to that. I believe we voted on this in June of 2022? July, sorry, of 2022. So it's been quite a while since we initially voted to allocate that that way. So I just want to ensure that we're doing the right thing with $500,000.
I do, I do agree with you. We did vote on this, I'm going to be totally transparent. We voted on this in July of 2022 and at the time I voted against it. And my rationale back then, and frankly, my reasoning now for being cautious is that we are at the tail end of a very large bond. And I want to be very careful with how we choose to spend those dollars because once it's gone, it's gone, right? It's one-time money. And frankly, we did get a couple, and I know that there's been rationale provided, but we had a couple of contractors who came in and questioned, rubber mulch, for example, is one of the things in there. And they had questioned the use of rubber mulch. We got a thorough explanation of why that would be warranted. Great, but honestly, I truly believe that. I personally would prefer spending the money on the inside of the buildings. I think that our staff and our students deserve to have the best environment to work and to be in all day long. And when I think about spending a half a million dollars on the outside of the building where it takes you two minutes to walk in and two minutes to walk out, but yet we have probably projects on the inside of the building that could be done in place. I just, I am very concerned about this. Another concern that I have is part of it is sprinkler system and sod. And one, having a sprinkler system, you have to have a maintenance department who is able to either maintain that or we have to hire it out to be flushed out, to be maintained and all that kind of thing. Also, I don't know if folks know this, but if you water your grass, it grows. And then it needs to be mowed more, right? So that's more maintenance fees. So in, just in total, I'm concerned about this project. And now that we do have the Facilities Committee, I would appreciate just a conversation there before.
I want to be realistic about what the Facilities Committee could do. We can, we can have a presentation, clarify scope, but we can't necessarily change the scope because it's already been awarded. because it's already been awarded. The bid was awarded on Monday or Tuesday of this week.
But I thought, but tonight was voting on the contract to actually get it out. Yep.
So we received bids. We have not awarded it yet. That's what the board is doing. So the board has to award any of the bids. So it was brought forward tonight for an award, but we can hold off on it, bring it to the Facilities Committee. But then we would either need to do a special board meeting if we're looking to move forward with it, or it would have to wait till the May board meeting to be awarded.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sure that we could get a special meeting and to vote on something if we need to. All right, Director Beer Meyer?
I understand the concern, but I am also a believer what something looks like from the outside is, shows what you have inside. So I do think, I'm not going to lie to you, I was walking in today and I'm like, this is not appealing to me. I'll be honest, I was walking in the front and I saw the grass and everything. I mean, I know it's early in the season, it's spring, but I do think some work needs to be done. And I am a firm believer what's outside is inside. So I do think it is important to do.
Any other comments? Director Brunz?
Would we be directing the work at the Facilities Committee to look and review the other bids that came in? Or even approve or deny this project taking place? It sounds like that was a scope that you might have been walking down.
My, yeah, my concern is scope. I agree that some things need to be done. My question is, is five, because the bids came in, right, at like $498,000, I think, was the lowest bid, was $498,000. My question is, is that the right number for what we want to have done, given the fact that we know that there's very little of this bond money left, right? So I believe initially, if I know my history here, when we first were awarded the bond, we had a Facilities Committee. They spent hours and hours going through and developing a list of what projects they thought would be appropriate for all of that money. So now we're at the tail end. We haven't had a Facilities Committee for several years now. And so I know that obviously, there's been conversations, there's been review that's been happening. But now that this committee is back on and now that we know where we're at at the end of this bond, I just want to make sure that there aren't any other projects that we might want to prioritize to use maybe some of this money or, you know, that would have been allocated towards this to something on the inside of the buildings or, you know, something else that is needed a bit more. That's where my head is at, and that's why I'm just, I'm not confident in voting on this, for this tonight. So that's where I'm at. Any other comments?
I'm cautious about, I'm making this comment. As a Facilities Committee, we don't make any decisions. We can get information and bring it back to the board. And I want to be sure that we're in our lane on this and that we're still doing governance and we're not doing management.
Director Brunz?
I guess my comment or question is if we delay the approval or delay this longer, even whatever project goes forward, is there even enough time, right? So if the plan is the summer and they don't put us in, they'll queue for the projects that they're doing. Will it get done at all? Are we going to be putting sprinklers in as the ground freezes?
I guess I don't totally know the answer to that. I would expect that the longer we delay it, the chances of us completing the work this summer are going to decrease.
If there was not prior a Facilities Committee and there was indeed a list with the projects that needed to be done, where, what happened to that list? And, I mean, can we know as an entire board right now where we're at on that? Or is that too much to ask at this point?
So there was a list at one point in time where projects were evaluated, and anything that the board was interested in has already moved forward. It's already been added to bond as a project. So I don't currently have a list of projects that were brought forward to bond that are just sitting there that we couldn't do. Now, there's always like LTFM projects and capital projects, so it's not that there's not work out there that could be done. But we really went, and it went through the board. We brought projects forward, and at that point in time, pretty much everything was able to be funded that the board had a desire to fund.
Do you guys meet on the 3rd for the? Was that what I heard?
Any other questions, comments, considerations? Okay, so the motion on the table right now is to have the Facilities Committee have a discussion. Or, how am I phrasing this?
Bring back more information.
To bring back, okay. Sending this to Facilities Committee just to bring back more information was the motion on the table. All right. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, all those opposed, say nay. All right. The motion fails. And with that, we will need a new motion.
The motion will have.
Zuzik would make the motion to approve the bonding project as currently described in the scope that's already been bid out.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Pine, second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, all those opposed, nay? Nay. All right, motion passes four to three to approve the Grounds Improvement Project as described and bidded. All right. Thank you. Next on our list is the Bills Payable. To note, Bills Payable is currently in, as an individual action item because Director Brunz has worked for 917, and I can say worked in past tense at this point. So the anticipation is that this is the last month that Bills Payable will reside outside of the consent agenda because we are paying bills from last month when he was still an employee at that district. He's moved on to a different district. So just want to make that clear. So I am looking for a motion on the Bills Payable.
So moved, Dressley.
Second, Pine.
All right, any discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor of approving the Bills Payable, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. And all those abstaining. All right. Motion passes 601. All right, and next, we have our quarterly donations on the agenda. So Director Milner, I would ask that you read the resolution to accept the donations.
I, Melissa Milner, introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Whereas School Board Policy 706 establishes guidelines for the acceptance of gifts and donations to the district, whereas Minnesota Statute, Section 465.03, states that the school board may accept a gift, grant, or device of real or personal property in accordance with the terms prescribed by the donor only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. And whereas the referenced donations in the District 200 Donations Report from January 2024 to March 2024 have been generously donated.
All right, can I get a second on the resolution?
So moved, Dressley.
All right.
Vice Chair Dressley duly seconded the motion for the adoption of the foregoing resolution. So I will take a roll call vote to accept the donation. So Director Pine?
Yes.
Director Zuzik?
Heck, yes.
Vice Chair Dressley?
Yes.
Chair Tate?
Yes.
Director Brunz?
Yes, with the big thank you attached.
Excellent. Director Milner, yes. And Director Beer Meyer?
Yes.
Therefore, be it resolved by the Hastings Public School District School Board to gratefully accept these gifts.
All right, thank you. We have in here gifts totaling approximately $84,000 for the quarter. So we thank you, community members, public, all of those donors out there. Greatly appreciate your support of the school district. Right, next on the approval list here is a trip for Boston in October of 2025. And I believe this is open to all high school students. Isn't that correct?
This is an optional trip, and so they will be going to Boston and New York City.
All right, so I'm looking for a motion on this item.
So moved, Dressley.
Second, Milner.
All right, so the motion is to approve, I assume?
Yes, and, sorry, the motion to approve the Boston trip as stated.
Okay, thank you. And then Milner, he seconded. Yes, okay. Any discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes unanimously to approve the Boston trip as stated. All right, and then the last item that we have to vote on tonight is the last day of school for seniors being Friday, May 31st. Who would like to make a motion on this? This means that they get out one week. One week early, earlier than everyone else.
You don't want to be that guy.
Pine will second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right, motion passes unanimously to have the last day of school for seniors be Friday, May 31st. Fantastic. And the next item on our list or the final item on the agenda tonight, actually, I do want to make a comment on that item. I will say traditionally, historically, school board members have served the seniors their lunch on their last day of school. I will say I have never experienced the kind of stress like I experienced that afternoon when you're trying to open a bun on the right side in about a half a split second and not ruin the bun for the students. It's fast and furious, I got to say. But it's fun. So our next board meetings are scheduled for, we have a work session scheduled for May 9th, which is a Thursday night. And then we have our regular board meeting scheduled for May 22nd. And going out for June, we have our work session for June 4th and our regular session, June 26th. I want to make the comment that at this time, we have no work sessions scheduled for July. And so then we jump to our regular board meeting on July 31st. Looking at the calendar for our May work session, items that I have noted currently, and of course, this is subject to change, but at this moment, this is what this looks like. We are going to get our quarterly student behavior report from our principals. We will be getting the student school board member recommendation from the committee, the top four students, or their top four recommendations, I should say. Then we have a presentation, I believe, tentatively penciled in for appropriate expenditure guidelines from the finance department, a discussion on even-year elections. And then, as Director Dressley mentioned earlier, the public comments form. So that is our May work session. And then so far, the only thing that we have for our May regular meeting at this time is welcoming our new student board members to the table. So that's what the next month looks like for us. All right. Yes, and then we have our committee meetings. And that is a second attachment here. And I can't read that, so. And I believe the, there is a document that's on the website. And so folks know, also, we have the committee meetings posted along with our regular board meetings posted in the district office on the bulletin board when you walk in. I think every board member summarized their committee meetings as we went through tonight, so I don't know that I need to repeat those dates. All right. And with that,